Okay, we're good to go.
All right. So, welcome to the City Council Oversight Committee. It is July 9th, 5,000th? I'm not entirely sure. It's July 9th. It's 4:00 PM. We have two items on the agenda today. The first is a discussion to determine budget priorities for the Community Needs Reserve Fund. And just so that everyone who might be watching knows how this is going to go, we're going to talk about several different bullet points kind of within that topic. We'll have a discussion. If you have any public comments that you would like to be read into the record so that we can all hear them, please email them to cityclerk@normanok.gov. If you're watching this on YouTube, the comments have been turned off because there is no one monitoring those comments, but you can fire off emails to cityclerk@normanok.gov and we will read them into the records. So, I wanted to kind of start by saying that I think we all recognize that we're in uncharted territory and that there's no right way to move forward with a program like this. But I think that we need to ensure that we have open processes that the public can participate in and shape the direction of this program and that will increase buy-in for the decisions that ultimately result from this work. And so, I think that we need to make smart, fiscally responsible choices that also have public buy-in. And so, I think a transparent process that the community can participate in will ultimately increase public confidence and investment in any of these final outcomes. So, the last point kind of of this first agenda item is going to be, how do we reach the marginalized communities that this program should center around? I think we need to do that in a very non-traditional and creative way. We're creating a culture-changing, non-traditional program here and we shouldn't be going about it in a traditional and institutional way. So, I'm thinking about outreach, direct outreach to the neighborhoods that tend to be primarily affected by issues like this. Community stores, having virtual meetings, direct contact, prepaid return postcards for suggestions, just lots of different ways to reach people who have often felt entirely disconnected from city processes and government generally. And so, to kind of dive into this first topic, we're asking too much of the Norman Police Department. I don't think any of us can disagree with that and I think even members of the public who are concerned about this process can recognize that. Their mandate, like the mandate of many police departments across the country, has been too broad and this has been harmful to our community and draining on our budget. The police do not have the tools to address every social problem and it is not fiscally or morally responsible to ask them to intervene in problems they're not equipped to solve. A better investment would be to call on the right professionals to intervene and to change the cultural beliefs and social conditions that create violence. My goal with an alternative public safety program is in fact to support the police department to create a sort of relief valve for the scope creep that this department has experienced in the last few decades. And this meeting aims to discuss the following through a series of meetings in this committee and non-traditional outreach to marginalized communities to ensure this program is centered around their needs. So, what I'd like to talk about today is a breakdown of NPD call areas for the last couple of years in order to get a sense of what types of calls are not directly related to crimes in progress. A review of some nationally-recognized alternative policing programs like Memphis, Eugene, Oregon, and Denver. Review of community partners that work in the areas a community program would likely address. Mental health, welfare checks, sexual assault, domestic violence. And then lastly, a discussion of how to generate community input about what a program should address and creative ways to reach communities largely disconnected from traditional institutional power structures like government. And so, kind of dipping through my packet here, I feel like the staff, does staff want to jump in at this point? Or we can, yeah, it looks like we've got a breakdown of the types of calls. So, Chief, I also did kind of a little, a little review of these calls and tried to compile them into different categories. But if you'd like, if you would like to take it first, you are welcome to. If not, I will continue.
I don't know how I break it down for you. I'm not sure which ones you want to look at. So, that's why I just sent you all of it so you could see it all and determine which ones you feel.
Yeah. Let me, let me kind of go through my kind of little review and you can tell me if I maybe have it incorrect and then I've got a few questions about it. So, it looks like we had 1,056 calls that related to suicide attempts. But it feels low and so I'm wondering where the calls for mental health transport are logged? Are they under escort transport?
Yes.
Okay. So then there were 945 escort transport calls that are likely, most of them, mental health-related, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So about 2,000 total mental health calls out of a total 98,221 calls for last year?
That's it.
And then it looks like we also had 4,359 total calls for welfare checks.
You're looking, that's 2018 data, not last year. Last year had 101,000.
101,000. Okay. Then, okay, the one in the packet is from 2018. It looks like.
They're both in there.
They're two different, two different tabs.
I see that now, all right. So, the one that I, that was the combined.
I don't see that. So, we're. Okay. That, ladies, I think I just, no, I'm pretty sure I PDFed both of them and sent them. So, okay, hang on.
And they're on pages 22 through 35 in the packet.
Yeah, I have, okay. Bear with me. So, the 98,221, is that, what year is that? That's 18.
That's 18.
So, next one.
Is 2019.
Okay.
1,604 total calls on page 28 of the packet.
Thank you for bearing with me.
No problem.
So, the 101,000 total is, is the most recent?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And so, then it looks like we had 4,359 welfare checks, one check area, one contact a subject, and then 4,357 that are welfare checks. We also had 6,100 total calls for domestic disturbance and sexual assault combined. 787 total calls for drugs or public intoxication or alcohol intoxication. And those kind of go through in a variety of subcategories. 825 total calls for runaway/lost children or juvenile truancy. And then 5,283 calls for, I guess suspicious activity is probably the best way to put it. So, Chief, I've got a couple of questions about a few categories of calls. Can you describe to me what contact a subject and then the COPDDAX, problem solving and relationship calls are?
Yeah, the DDX is a data-driven approaches to crime and traffic safety. And that's just when the officers go out and they're working those areas that was identified as high crime with it overlapping with high accident locations. They log it as a DDX.
Okay.
Time. The other one for, was it check the area? Which one did you ask about?
Contact a subject?
Contact a subject could be a variety of things where they just want contact. Hopefully, you know, it could turn into it's a civil standby type thing. It could turn into just them, they're wanting to make a report, but they weren't sure whether they had what they needed for a report. They're not sure if it was a crime. There's just a variety of things that they may want to talk to us about. They just want a police officer to contact them.
Okay. And so, and then, do I have this right? That there were 110 calls about Call Oki for utility location?
Yes.
And is that for, oops, we cut a necessary utility line? Or is this calls that should have gone to Call Oki that came into 911 instead?
That's for public works where we log it through dispatch.
Okay, okay.
I have a question. I don't know if I'm able to.
Yes, Sarah.
I was wondering how the high crime areas are determined?
Calls and the reports, the reports that come from the areas.
So, just the sheer number of calls in those areas?
The, the number of reports in the area of crimes, part one crimes.
Okay. And then the COP, problem solving and COP relationships?
Yes, that's just where we're going out on, that could be a talk where somebody's requested us to talk about a variety of different things. And the other one would be like if we were, you know, they asked us to come by for a parade or a birthday party or whatever, they just want an officer to come by.
Okay. Okay. And then it looks like of 244 incidents of hate crime reported in 2019, it looks like they were all responded to by white law enforcement officers with only one exception and then a pretty high rate in 2018 as well. Just some miscellaneous data to kind of get out there so we can frame this discussion. And so, when you look at mental health calls, 2,000, welfare checks, close to 4,500, drugs intoxication, close to 1,000, juvenile calls, suspicious calls, about 5,000. You know, we're getting up into the 20%, 30% range of calls that are not crimes in progress. I did not include sexual assault and domestic violence in that category for that reason. And so, just to kind of put this into perspective of what we're looking at, we do have a large number of calls that come into the police department that are not crimes in progress that maybe can be fielded by other organizations or partnerships or programs so that our armed law enforcement officers are available to respond to crimes in progress. I didn't see water leaks listed as a particular category in the calls in 2019. I'm sure that those could fall into a range of categories, but again, calls that can, can be fielded elsewhere. And so, now kind of moving into some of the nationally-recognized programs. I had an hour-long conversation yesterday with one of the city council members in Eugene, Oregon, to talk about the CAHoots program. And I came away from that call feeling entirely optimistic about our ability to utilize this program as inspiration for one of our own. And so, for those who don't know, CAHoots is an acronym for crisis assistance helping out on the streets and it provides mobile crisis intervention 24/7 in the Eugene Springfield metro area. Eugene has a population of 163,000. Springfield has a population of 60,000. And CAHoots was created as a contract partnership with the Whitebird Clinic, which was a mental health service provider in the area. This program was established in 1987 and partnered with Whitebird Clinic, which still runs it today. So, they are dispatched through the communication, the Eugene Communication Center, so through 911. And they dispatch, each team consists of a medic and a crisis worker, which typically is a social worker type of individual. And they respond to 20% of the 911 calls that come into the Eugene Oregon Police Department. And last year, they responded to 24,000 calls and they needed to call for police backup only 150 times. And so, to provide an example of how this team would operate, I assume that most of you know the case from Southern Oklahoma recently that has recently gained some state and national attention. Two officers responded to a call about a man acting in a disorderly way. They made contact with Mr. Lakey and when he did not comply with their demands, he was tasered more than 50 times in a nine-minute span and he died. He did not touch the officers. He did not approach the officers and neither officer attempted to put their hands on him before tasers were deployed. Now, as an example, if CAHoots had answered that call instead, this was a situation that I actually posed yesterday to this council member from Eugene, CAHoots would have responded to this call in their blue van with a white dove. Their, their team wears what I like to call intentionally casual uniforms, typically jeans and a blue polo shirt just with the white dove on it. They are not armed. They've got a cellphone, a notepad, and that's about it. So, if they had answered that call, they would have made contact with Mr. Lakey, talked to him about why he was acting in erratic way and offered to connect him with a service that would be able to help him. If he agreed, they would take him there. If he did not agree, they, if they felt he was not a danger to himself or other people, they would end the contact. And I say end the contact as opposed to release him because he was never in custody in the first place. He was always free to leave and so they would simply remove themselves from the situation and go. If they did believe he was a danger to himself or others, they have the option of calling for backup if additional persuasion to utilize these services doesn't work. That's the way the program works. They started with one van and one team, although it was probably multiple people that worked kind of in rotation. Now, they have two vans and two teams, but most of the time, they only have one team activated for service. There are a few days out of the week, you know, the weekends tend to be the times when they need two teams, but they very rarely have two teams out in the field responding to these calls. It's very typically one. And their high call volume times are between the hours of 5:00 PM and 1:00 AM. And so, typically Friday and Saturday nights, they'll have two teams out there, but generally, they only have one. And so, CAHoots has now expanded to include crisis counseling, suicide prevention, conflict resolution and mediation, grief and loss, substance abuse, housing crisis, first aid and non-emergency medical care. I did not even go through and start calculating the statistics for, you know, medical treatment that police officers respond to, not as an assist, but are the first ones on the scene. Resource connection and referrals and transportation to services. And so, they also, a big one for me that I didn't think about until I was talking to this council member from Eugene is that CAHoots also serves death notices. So, they are the ones who notify next of kin. So, if someone dies from a crime or from a traffic accident, they are the ones who go and make contact with the next of kin and are, in my opinion, much better equipped to be able to handle the range of reactions that serving death notices can bring about. So, why focus on mental health first? That's where I think we should start this conversation. And the reason I think that is because being mentally ill is not a crime. But often, Norman Police is called to respond to mental health crises in our community and the creation of a mental health crisis response team has been identified as a high priority opportunity to increase safety for all residents and officers and reduced wasteful expenditures of city funds. I think we're very lucky here in Norman to have a strong state-run mental health presence. It obviously could be better. I think we all know that. Unlike many other communities, most of the time, NPD does not have to drive 100-plus miles to transport a mental health patient to a nearest open bed, most of the time. But even when they're just bringing someone to Griffin, let's say, that officer cannot be available to respond to calls that are within their very specialized skill set. And so, the allocation of resources to mental health responders would make the community safer and allow law enforcement officers to focus on the situations that they are professionally trained to deal with. If they are bringing someone to Griffin, they can't respond to a crime in progress. And we have seen that there are a number of mental health or substance abuse-related calls that our police officers respond to on an annual basis. So, one of the reasons why CAHoots has been so successful is because of the partnership with the Whitebird Clinic to get that program up and running. And so, we have the Oklahoma State Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services here in Norman. We have Norman Regional Health System, which has already publicly discussed an expansion of behavioral health services for our community because they recognize the need. We also have the Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center and Thunderbird Clubhouse. And more specifically for youth services, we have Crossroads, which has seen some very significant funding cuts at both the state and local level in the last 10 years. And some of their incredibly impactful programs to address juvenile issues in our community have been eliminated because of these budget cuts. And so, that's kind of where I want to stop and kind of open it up for discussion to kind of get a sense from council members and from Sarah and Madison and Ashley about how we should go about looking at these programs, how we should possibly reach out to some of our community partners and talk to them. Because CAHoots does their work on a total budget of 2.1 million a year. And the city of Eugene contributes $500,000 annually to their program. They, because they, because Whitebird is a nonprofit, they do a lot of private fundraising. They have a lot of grant opportunities that they apply for. So, they only ask for about $750,000 from the communities that they're contracted with to help make these services happen. And if a metro area of 225,000 people can run an entire program with two vans and two teams maximum at a time and then also feel that those two teams and two vans can address a pretty significant population expansion in the coming years, then I think that that's a very achievable goal for us to. They started their program just doing 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM seven days a week and then expanded it to 24/7 service. So, they, they saw an incremental approach to this as their population grew and our population is about half of what their entire metro area is. So, I think we're pretty close to, you know, an achievable goal here and the foundation of a program that can be expanded into sexual assault and domestic violence support and a number of other areas. So, I'll kind of pitch it out, pitch it out to everyone and get a sense of what you're feeling and what you hope this program will look like and how we should go about creating it. All right, let's go with Stephen first. I'm not going to unmute you. I don't think I can, so.
Well, I think you really, you really said about all I could say, especially with the data. You know, identifying that 20, you know, roughly 20% of the calls in Norman Police are responding to are not criminal activity and it would not require a person with a weapon to show up, I don't think, to respond. The examples you've given are exactly the ones that we've talked about. I've mentioned to you that Crisis Cops Unit in San Antonio is another one. That one happens to have an HBO show about it. If people want to check that out, it's very interesting. The program they have there to address these same situations. So, I think we're right, on the right track here. This is exactly what I'm hoping to do, what you've identified here. And this real data, I think, is what's really important. People need to understand that our police are responding to a lot of things that they don't need to be responding to and there are often negative consequences that come with that. So, that's all I have right now. Let everybody else share what they have. Thanks.
Thanks, Stephen. I appreciate it. Who's next? Lee, Lee Hall. You can mute yourself. Unmute yourself.
Hang at this by now, wouldn't you? And so, I think you've done an excellent job of summarizing. I don't really have too much to add at this point because I have gotten so many different representatives for our community that have specifically forwarded information about this particular program among others. And so, this is the one that I've spent the most time looking at and looking into and I think you did such an excellent job of summarizing it all. I don't really think I can add much to it, other than it does seem to be a model that has some very similar comparisons to a city our size and that we do appear to have resources within the city that we could partner with in a fairly speedy way, I would think, if we decided to try to implement a test program or start with a model at, you know, restricted times of the day to just sort of grow the program. So, I too am really optimistic about what kind of consequences we could have, positive consequences for our community if we looked at this as a model and also, you know, incorporated maybe some other things that we've found from other programs. So, I, I think it's definitely worth looking into. There seems to be a lot of community support for this type of program, at least from the people that I'm hearing from. So, I'm glad that we're starting the conversation today.
Thanks, Lee. That does remind me, I want to point out that these medics and social workers that are hired by CAHoots, everyone gets paid the same. Everyone is paid $18 an hour for the hours that they work. These are people who are usually, they're, you know, they have experience in this field, but they're, you know, they're not 10 or 15 or 20 years into their, into their careers. You know, this is, this is something that is a way to hone skills that they have learned and trained and educated themselves in and received degrees in or certifications and are kind of building, building their resume to continue their work elsewhere. And CAHoots takes a lot of pride in that, that they take people who are in that kind of three to five years into their career and really help them hone these skills and, you know, develop a skill set that they can then utilize either in the same realm or, you know, in their, in their next step. And so, you know, and I don't think that this is necessarily going, needs to be a carbon copy program. You know, Memphis has a really strong program in their crisis intervention teams. One of the big differences is that the Memphis Crisis Intervention Team is actually run through the police department, whereas CAHoots is, you know, a separate contracted organization. But, you know, I think, I think that they're all worth giving a look to. This one is just the one that seems to be the most accessible and has the longest track record of success because they've been in place since 87 and the Memphis, the Memphis Crisis Intervention Team was the mid-'90s. So, there's about 10 more years of data in the Eugene, Oregon model than there is in the Memphis model. Councilmember Wilson.
I like that these programs have track records that we can refer to. That's awesome because, you know, a lot of the fear that we're seeing in the community is that we're going to have a hug patrol or something that is, you know. So anyways, so I like that we can look back. So, in that, in that, whatever I'm trying to say. Have any of, have you, Kate, talked to the police side in those communities? Or Chief Foster, are you familiar with the police departments in those communities? Because I'm curious how it's received with, with them. How are they working together?
Yes, we're familiar with those programs. And that's why they started the Cleveland County Behavioral Response and Treatment Team Task Force here. It includes the different mental health facilities here, OU, the county, Cleveland County Mental Health, Griffin, Cleveland County Detention Center and Red Rock. And they was trying to put something together like this. We just haven't been able to get commitment from people to have people out there answering these calls or going on these things. So, we're familiar with that. We're also familiar with the Memphis model that was mentioned somewhere in that stuff. The Memphis model is the CIT model. They generally push for like 20% to 25% of your staffing to be CIT certified. There's a big argument now on, you know, true core of that. And at the university there, I believe in Memphis, they look at just sort of a 25% thing. Here at Norman, we've got over 30% of our people trained on CIT and we would like to train all of our people on CIT just because of our community and the people we deal with daily.
So, Chief, can I ask real quick? Being right there, I have a question about the CIT. So, you have officers that are trained in that. Tell me what CIT stands for?
Crisis Intervention Team.
Oh, you said that. Okay, sorry. So, on the Crisis Intervention Team, are those, are those, they're regular police officers that are out in the community that have this intervention?
Yes.
Training? Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
I, oh, sorry, Chief Foster.
That was good. I just.
Okay.
Sorry. We're familiar with them and we've worked on some of these things before.
And so, I was, I did ask, I did ask the council member from Eugene how the police department felt about this program when it was implemented and now and if there was any change in their perspective on it. And what she said is that at the, at the beginning, it was actually, it was a conversation that they were having as a community to develop this program. And, you know, she called it, she called it kind of the hippie enclave up there in the mid-1980s, was extremely worried about the de-institutionalization that was happening in mental health across the country. You know, it was a Reagan administration initiative to, you know, close, close mental institutions and, you know, this, this group of individuals in Eugene was very concerned about the impact that that would have on individuals who need mental health treatment. And so, from what she says, of course, you know, I have not confirmed this yet with, with the FOP up in Eugene, but she offered to connect me with their FOP local president, Michael Cluse, who she says would say nothing but wonderful things about CAHoots and the role that they play in taking some of these calls off of the EPD's plate. And so, you know, that's, that's certainly something that I'm willing to take her up on. I was like, you know, I just don't have enough time before this first meeting to get in touch with him. I want it to be, I want it to be. I want it to be, I want it to be a detailed conversation. And so I want to make sure that this is actually the way we wanted to go before I, before I utilized his time. But she was happy to connect me with him.
Uh-oh, we lost her.
She might have to, she might get kicked off and have to re-enter.
There we go.
Three is the idea of a hug patrol could be good, though.
A what?
I like hug patrol.
I'm not a patrol, by the way.
I like a hug patrol, not right now, though.
Right now, right now, it can't be hugs, but hug patrol, everybody might need a hug.
And I think, you know, another important component to this, which is something I kind of glossed over, is that the, the training of the nine-one-one dispatch in Eugene was critical to ensuring the success of this program. And because it's incumbent on the dispatch to be able to ask the right questions and get the right information to know kind of which way to direct the calls, whether it's to cahoots or to the police department. And that took a lot of training. And it also, it helped once the public became better versed in what this program was aimed to do. Because if someone called and described the situation and said, I think this is, I think this is a call for cahoots, which is something that this councilperson had experienced just a few months before. There was someone outside of her apartment, apartment complex screaming at himself, at the world, was just in an incredible amount of distress. When she called, she relayed what was happening and said, you know, I think this is a call for cahoots. And she watched out her window as the van pulled up. And, you know, these two individuals got out and they sat down on the curb next to this man who was, you know, pacing back and forth in the streets, yelling at himself. And, you know, they, they talked to him for about fifteen minutes. He ended up sitting down next to them and still very agitated, but was willing to sit down and talk to them. And they ended up, you know, helping him in the van and took him to the service that he agreed to participate in. And so it really requires buy-in at all levels, buy-in from the police department, buy-in from the dispatchers, buy-in from the community. But I think that this is a, a good starting point. And so, you know, this is something that I'd like to continue pursuing and get some additional details and information about how their program was initially funded, what the, what, what their maybe hidden costs are that, you know, we maybe don't see kind of from a thousand miles away. And dig into that program. And this council member said she was more than happy to connect me to whoever I needed to speak to in Eugene to make it happen. But they're getting a lot of calls, mostly from the media about their, about their program. But that they are very excited that other municipalities are looking at this program. And they said they would love nothing more than to de-expand into additional communities because they feel so strongly about it. So is anyone else, Councilmember Wilson? And then, and then Sarah? And then Lee.
I'm sorry, Sarah. Real quick, I know you probably don't have this, Kate, you might, because you're really good like that. But do we know? Have they seen a more equitable arrest rate broken down by demographics? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? Are we, have they seen a change in that? Is there a difference over time? Okay.
To give, to give kind of some, some cost estimates, the Eugene Police Department has a budget of seventy million dollars and Springfield's is twenty million dollars. The program, they believe right now, is saving fifteen million a year through E R. Diversion and jail diversion. And that, and that's across two communities with a population of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. But that's, I mean, that's a, I mean, granted, that's thirty years down the road. So I don't think we could, I don't think we could cut that number in half and say that we would immediately see that kind of cost savings. But if we can start to reduce the number of people that we're sending to the E R. Or sending to jail, I mean, I think, I think we'll get, we'll get to that level. I think that Norman is uniquely situated. The Eugene City Councilwoman was very, very jealous, professionally jealous of the services that we have here because some of them, they are still building. And so she really thinks that we're in a good spot to be able to kick this off. And she's willing to stand as a resource and connect us to whoever we need. Sarah.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments so far and all the research and the work that's gone into looking into having something like this in Norman. I know a lot of people have expressed support and excitement for the opportunity to develop a program like this for Norman. And I think, at least from what I've been able to see and read and from the conversations that I've had, that this really does make a lot of sense as a starting place for talking about alternatives to policing. Both because we are in a moment with the pandemic where we've started to see very significant mental health crises in terms of, you know, people are under a lot of stress. I, I saw some reports coming out that, that thirty-two percent of Americans missed their housing payment for July. That's very stressful. And I, I think like we can't really understate the impact of the pandemic and, and then all the fallout from the pandemic on people's mental health. You know, a lot of the things that we used to have access to and that were very healthy things for us to do, to be in community with each other and to, and to really deal with mental health in a healthy way are not available to us right now because of the pandemic. And so we've, we've seen all kinds of statistics that show that people are under a much greater amount of pressure on their mental health. And we're seeing that in, in terms of people having break, those breakdowns and crises. And, and so I think it's, it's just so timely for, for us to be making this intervention. And I hope that it can also be something that will be really beneficial to the police department as well. There's a lot of data that I've been looking at that shows that it does also, having these types of programs can reduce injuries to police officers as well as to the general public. And then the, the point about jail diversion, I think it's so important to, just to kind of look and think of how we're prioritizing public health in the way that we think about our, our criminal justice system as it is. You know, we know in Oklahoma, we have among the highest rates of incarceration in the world. We have very, very high rates of incarceration. And then also another unique thing about, about our country. We're one of the only countries in the world that has cash bail, meaning that sometimes people are sitting in jail just simply for the fact of, of not having enough money to be able to pay to get out. And there was a study released from the, the John Hopkins and UCLA just published some research that showed that prisoners are five-point-five times more likely to get COVID-nineteen and three times more likely to die from it. So when we're talking about jail diversion, I, I do think that we really are talking about saving lives in terms of, you know, as, as Kate pointed out, being mentally ill is, is not a crime. But unfortunately, just because of access to resources or because of the way our systems are, are set up, people who are in mental health crisis often do get it processed through the criminal justice system. And so making this investment could be a really, really smart way to, to keep our community safe and, and just to make police officers' jobs less stressful as well. So thanks, everybody, for, for all your hard work on this.
Thanks, Sarah. I really appreciate that feedback. Councilmember Hall, have your hand up. You are muted.
I know. And thank you, Sarah. I, I was just going to comment, actually bring up the whole, you know, where we find ourselves in the pandemic and all of the things that are being revealed and all of the, just as you said, Sarah, the, the stress level of all this. And that brings me back to, as we think about incorporating or starting a program like this, one of the things that you mentioned was the longevity that they've had. And so they do have a well-established program and they are funded, I think, appropriately. I, the things I've read, of course, they could always use more resources, but they seem to be highly dependent on the public-private partnership part with most of the funding coming from outside sources. So I'm curious as to, you know, how we're thinking about trying to fund this. And because of the pandemic and because of the economic fallout of all this, this may not be the best possible time to be funding for, you know, outside sources. So I'm just trying to think that through.
Sure. Before, before I jump over to Councilmember Holman, just on that particular point, if we were going, I'm going, these are super basic, not, I mean, not really based on anything except the basic numbers. You know, they have a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand population in the two cities that are in this service area. And the total program cost is two-point-one million.
Right.
And so let's say even as an example, we're half the population, let's cut that number in half. That's just a little over one million. And, you know, we have six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand for a first year, which is a very, very strong pilot program. You know, say that's half of what we would need for twenty-four-seven service. I would also point out our cost of living is a lot lower in Oklahoma. I wouldn't be, I know their gas prices are a lot higher, as an example. So, you know, I think that there are ways that we could run a program like this without needing quite so much outside funding, but I think that that outside funding would come. I know that there's grant money available for programs like this. And I do think that it could serve as a really good foundation for a broader program. I mean, one of the things that Eugene has done is they have, they have a homeless outreach team. It is a team through the city that canvases homeless camps on a regular basis. It's not just a point-in-time count. It's not a responding to calls of, of encampments that need to be broken up or an issue with someone who is homeless. This is a regular recurring team whose only job it is, is to maintain contact with their homeless population. And so, you know, I think we have a confluence of things happening right now. You know, we have a bond issue for a homeless facility. You know, we have ways that this, that this program could, could branch off in any number of ways. And so, and I think that would also bring in additional funding opportunities to fund those sides of the programs and maybe some individual workers who can kind of overlap. So I think there's a lot of room here. But I think, I think that what we have to start with is very strong.
Yeah, that's a good point. One of the things I want to throw in there, as you men, mentioned, our homeless population in Norman. We might want to bring Michelle Evans into this conversation as well, our homeless coordinator. I sit on the, I'm actually not an official member of the homelessness task force, but I go to as many meetings as I possibly can. So it's been really inspiring to learn about all the things that we are doing in our community for our homeless population. And I think people do not realize. So Carrie Bryant with our police department is very tuned in to our homeless population. And both of them work closely with a continuum of care team that really do address issues every single day with our homeless population. So I do think it would be probably useful to get both of them in this conversation, too, as we develop a program. Because they are, they have lots of information.
And I, I really.
I'd like to add something there, too, as well, Kate, if, if you don't mind. So on the topic of contacting and really developing a relationship with our homeless population, I know one of the ideals we're aspiring toward is to develop a, this, this system and this program that provides a task force to, to, to respond to mental health crises. And I'd really like to see what we can do as far as being, becoming very specific and intentional about that in particular. Because on the topic of homelessness, we've had a very serious issue with inequitable and seemingly racially motivated incidents at a regional hospital. I think they're, they're going to be a part of this conversation. We have to really define our relationship there. I have to, you know, I can't really say much more to that without reminding our community about Marconio Kessi, who died in police custody after he was arrested for trespassing in a regional hospital. He was a thirty-four-year-old man. And he was under cardiac arrest when he was, in my opinion, brutally arrested. And that is one story of a longstanding tradition of discernible violence that's been experienced by patients and family members of patients at a regional hospital. So I really want, I would really love us to see and explore this idea that mental health crisis can also extend to just general health crises. Not all health, health crises at a regional hospital are mental crises. So I'd love to see us become really intentional about that. And I also was listening, we were, I was listening to us discuss some of the more fiscally responsible options we have if we were to develop a program like this. And I think that for the sake of longevity, if we had a citizens' reporting system, something that citizens can use or a hotline they can call to express their concerns or make reports about any general concerns of safety, security, it would definitely help for the transparency of those who are on the task force. Also, what, what I believe a lot of us are seeing right now is a lot of concerns regarding police behavior toward certain community members and certain city staff recently. And I think that, again, for the longevity of this program, if we could develop a misconduct reporting system where if citizens had a concern about an experience they had with a police officer, they could also share that concern and find a way to resolve that in a safe way. But otherwise, I'm, I feel, I really appreciate what you brought to this conversation, Kate. It's very, the ideals that we discussed so far are very thorough and very actionable, very fiscally responsible, a lot less expensive than some of our policing options that we're using right now. So I, I really want to commend everyone who's contributed to this conversation so far because what we're really envisioning for ourselves is optimal liberation and safety and security for all. And a lot of that starts with making all of these processes more humane. And I think that a lot could be said about the humanity that's missing from some of the options that we have right now. So I just want to show my appreciation for everyone who's contributing to this conversation. It's, it can be a challenging topic to have, for sure. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Ashley. And before we, you know, I've been getting a couple, a couple of questions about the chat feature on the YouTube, on the YouTube page. So for maybe people who joined late, the chat feature has been suspended for this meeting. There is no one monitoring for public comments. So if you'd like to make a public comment about either of the two, two agenda items today, you can send an email to cityclerk@normanok.gov and they will be right into the record. But the chat feature has been turned off because there is no one monitoring the chat. And so Sarah, I see you, but Councilmember Holman has been waiting for a few minutes and then Councilmember Wilson, and then we'll get back to you.
Just, I just wanted to, well, a lot of great points have been made tonight or so far. I really appreciate the input we've heard. I think this is extremely helpful. And I, I just wanted to briefly mention the, talked about it, how some of these cities have been able to pay for these programs and some of it's been through savings. So, you know, you know about this story, but last year, former Sheriff Todd Gibson and I actually took a field trip to Tulsa together. And we visited the Sobering Center, the Women's Resource Center and the Tulsa County Jail. And our goal of visiting the Sobering Center was actually exploring how we could bring that back to Norman. But the main point was they were explaining to, to us how they paid for it. And the way it is, is that before the Sobering Center, the police would arrest somebody and take them to jail. And it would take several hours for the officer to process the person through the jail. And then, of course, the person is now in the system and booked and going to have to go through a whole legal ordeal. So they started the Sobering Center. And in this case, the officers could just check someone in. And it takes about eight minutes for the officer to check them in. They are not under arrest. There is no legal record of them being admitted or checked in. And when they're ready to leave, they can leave. It's recommended, I think, twelve hours. But the way they were able to pay for it was they said, okay, it takes X. Amount of time for an officer to book somebody in jail. It takes eight minutes for us to check them into this facility. What is the savings in, you know, employee hours, officer hours in that span of time? They figured out that number and they applied that to, to go towards funding this facility. So in Tulsa, I think that it was two-hundred-thousand dollars a year the city of Tulsa puts towards that facility. I think the county may contribute as well. But that, that was a way that really stuck out to me was using some math and figuring out what are we saving by our officers not spending so much time on these other calls? And what does that actually mean in a dollar amount? And so that's just one of the experiences I had up in Tulsa that I wanted to share as a way that we could mimic, not just in regard to a Sobering Center, but these other programs.
And I think, yeah, and I think, I think a pilot program using this first set of funds can really give us a sense of what that savings could be. And then maybe what an annual budget could look like for a program like this moving forward. And of course, the one thing I want to point out before we go back. And of course, the one thing I want to point out before we go back to Councilmember Wilson is that I really want to put together a long-term framework for what the long-term vision will be for this, for this program and moving forward. Um, kind of recognizing that, you know, master plans and, you know, five to 10-year vision plans are the way to continue with the same sentiment and optimism for this program, no matter who is sitting in any of our seats at any point in the future. And so to me, that is, I don't want anyone to think that if we focus on mental health now, that we are just setting aside all of these other areas that we would like to expand into, but that we put together, once we have a pilot program, we put together a five and a 10-year action plan of how we implement the next phases of this program. So, Councilmember Wilson.
I cede my time, sorry. My, my question was answered.
All right, Sarah.
Um, I, I just wanted to sort of echo and reinforce what, what others have said. Um, I, I, I think what you just said about this being like a long-term shift, um, is a really good way of, of thinking about it. Um, but also just, um, in, I think in looking at these kinds of programs as we're making this transition, um, one thing that I think could really help, uh, with the community conversations around it, um, is, you know, changing sometimes some of the mentalities that I've really, I've seen show up a lot in, uh, city council, um, in the city council chambers during meetings of, of, instead of looking at these issues as, um, a question of good or bad people, or seeing the people themselves. I've, I've seen a lot of times when public comments are made that on the issue of homelessness, for example, um, that a lot of times the attitude is that the people themselves are the problem. Um, and that's where you get into issues of criminalization of, of things that are really, um, more, that are not, um, crimes in, in themselves, but are just social problems that we, um, that have been channeled over to the criminal justice system. And so if we can, um, if everyone can kind of pull back and really instead of looking at the issue as good and bad people, um, start to use other frameworks of thinking about these things as, okay, there may be people who need help or there may be people who are doing harm. And how can we address that harm without, um, you know, just creating a system that, um, you know, okay, you make one mistake and, and now you get to go sit in a cage. Um, so I think, um, this is going to be a very long process, um, and will take, you know, everybody cooperating. Um, but I think it can also be very good for, um, for everybody who gets involved in it. And I, I think Madison also had something to say on this.
Yeah, thank you so much, um, for kicking it to me, Sarah. I know, Kate, you're trying to like look over the entire chat, but I'm sure you can't see everything.
Oh, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't even have the chat open. I was like, okay.
No, 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 you're, you're fine. We figured it out.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the arrays.
Just to continue on that line, um, and the way I think about this issue sort of as a behavioral therapist, um, is thinking about things within like their ABC consequence. So you have your antecedent, you have your behavior, you have your consequence. And the rate, right now, how policing kind of works is the antecedent is we see someone doing something, what we deem to be bad, they're homeless, they're doing drugs, they're doing whatever. Um, and then the behavior is they get, or the consequences, they get arrested or whatever. That's the action behind that. And then, um, and then they, you know, get a record and then have to deal with rebuilding that for their entire lives. And now it makes it harder to get a job. It makes it harder to get involved in other programs. So instead, let's try to avoid that in the first place and change our idea of how we just think about these things in the first place. They should not be things we call the police on because instead we treat addiction as a disease and as something that is treatable within our community and something that is preventable within our community. Um, so that way it is vital that people have some way to reach out to help without having to dial a police officer as a first responder. Instead, we give those opportunities to people who are experts in mental health, who people who understand the addiction process and what those symptoms can kind of sort of look at. Um, and people, you know, right now, we kind of ask too much of our police officers because they are supposed to be focused more on what I would consider things to be like violent crimes, um, and whatnot, rather than someone being mentally ill, homeless, you know, what have you. And so instead, um, it's vital that we have these services outside of the police department. The police department has tried its, tried to create some sort of programs outside of, um, you know, just parole and trying to create, you know, recreational programs to try to boost morale, but they created the Norman Citizens Advisory Board at the suggestion of Norman Citizens for Racial Justice. And still that policy in and of itself is kind of like a suggestion box for the chief. It's just kind of the normal rights of any citizen, except for they kind of have a bat signal for the, uh, chief of, uh, police, uh, the chief of police, um, to make suggestions about trainings and whatnot. And what we said with Chief Foster said himself is like, we've tried to do this, but we failed because we couldn't find the people, we failed because of this. And those answers, while, uh, disheartening, are not acceptable anymore. Um, we need to do something about this now. And I think cahoots give us this, an extremely rare opportunity to address those things with the immediate future, because it seems like a lot of the issues that we encounter with the police are also going to be, you know, problems that we run into with the, um, union. And so we have an opportunity to do something positive right now without getting involved in issues that require more of a state response or a higher up response. So I think what we can do, especially with the misconduct reporting system, I mean, we have our complaints reported on the open data portal on the police department's page, but even then you can see how just the structure of reporting those systems provides four different opportunities for non-corrective action and only one sustained action. So that in and of itself shows how it's sort of hard to report a complaint and then have there be corrective action based on that. Um, so at the end of the day, I think what we're trying to do is just genuinely like decriminalize mental illness, homelessness, being black on the street, you know what I mean? So I think this is a unique opportunity that Norman especially has a responsibility to get ahead on, given that our neighbors are the second high, like most brutal forces. Oklahoma City has the most, uh, has a second highest rate of deadly police encounters. You know, we incarcerate the most women in the world. We have our own due responsibility to do something about this and to also provide a program that is outside of the policing department and how that culture has sort of existed to this point. Um, thank you so much for leading this conversation though. Um, that's all I really wanted to put out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. I, I really appreciate that feedback as well. And I think something that I want to, and I'll, I'll reiterate this as many times as I can and as many different venues as I can, is that I think it's really important that we all, everyone who's going to be participating in these conversations and the creation of this program, to set our egos aside, that it's not, this is not an indictment of any particular person or, you know, of any particular past action that at this point, what we're talking about is moving forward and creating a program that centers and humanizes the people who have been harmed by the way we have criminalized behavior, sometimes, sometimes in a racial way, sometimes in, you know, because of mental health, sometimes in terms of your housing status, that this is not about us or an indictment on any particular individual. This is all about how do we create programming moving forward that has a positive impact on the community? And I think if everyone kind of sets their, sets their ego aside and realizes that this isn't, this isn't, this is not an indictment of, of what has happened in the past, this is how do we move forward? How do we recognize that we have systemic problems that we need to solve and how do we do it in a different way? And there's another program that I didn't mention because I can't remember where it's from and I wish that I could remember, but it's a program that actually pairs law enforcement officers with social workers and behavioral therapists to go on certain types of calls. And so you have this whole range of cahoots over on one side, which is just a completely separate, you know, partnership from the police department that responds to calls. You have the Memphis model over on the other side, which tries to instill this program within the police department's crisis intervention teams itself. And then a whole spectrum in the middle of ways to kind of create a similar outcome in a different way. And so while I focus on the cahoots program right now and I want to chase it down more, um, you know, I, I am, I am fully open to different ways to create this program, which kind of leads me into the last point on this item, just because I'm trying to keep an eye on the time of how do we reach the communities who have been so disproportionately impacted by the way we do things now? Um, you know, is, I know it's especially complicated because of, because of COVID and, you know, more difficulty in having direct interaction. Um, but it seems like we need to have, we need to have a full and comprehensive toolbox about how we reach out to these communities, because many of them don't have consistent enough internet access to even watch this, watch this meeting on YouTube or to have a Facebook Live conversation. Um, but how do we reach them? You know, do we go door to door and leave leaflets with a link to a Google form? Um, do we, again, I, I really like the idea, although I don't know where, where I or we or anyone would find the money for it, of mailers with detachable, uh, you know, prepaid postcards that they could just slip in the mailbox with their suggestions. Uh, you know, how do we reach people who are not going to come to us? And we know that they're not going to come to us because it took, it took an entire generation of systemic injustice to get some to a meeting to ask for change. So how do we reach out to these communities? And I, I am more aiming this at the representatives of Norman Citizens for Racial Justice, but I do want feedback from everyone on this. Ashley, you unmuted. Do you, do you want to start?
Yeah, I'd like to add something to that. And before I, um, add to, um, what you just shared, Kate, I wanted to clarify about the suggestion for, um, a misconduct reporting system and specifically a policeman misconduct reporting system. Um, um, considering the lack of, lack of effectiveness for what exists as far as reporting misconduct to Norman PD, it would be more of a system that's mitigated by a task force, um, by these people who have, can have these more professional and human experiences with community members. Because, um, part of the, the, the issue or the concern of longevity is making sure that this whole process from beginning to the top is not disrupted. And, um, there is, and I don't want to highlight too much anything negative, but we've seen some community members and some members of the police department being very vocal, um, about, uh, not supporting defunding and, um, some of these concerns that the committee is bringing forward. And part of that longevity is community members feeling like they have a place to report concerns regarding police behavior and misconduct in a way that's transparent and we don't have that right now. Um, we have some, whatever system to make complaints to submit to NPD by, about NPD employees. It's just not very intuitive. Um, also, um, I know, um, I've, I was born and raised in Norman, I've been here my entire life. I come from the east side. I don't, I'm not sure how, um, I'm not very clear on how high crime areas or how those parameters are set up, but I, I grew up on the east side and I know people there. And I come from these, having to mitigate challenges at every single level of experience as a Black woman, as a low-income person, as a mother of four Black children and a mother of a special needs child. And a lot of, a lot of this welcoming those people from those communities, instead of for sharing a story, letting people discuss their own narratives and their own experiences, is making sure that there's a spot, um, and I don't mean to be too cliche, but a spot at the table. Um, Kate, I really appreciate that you, um, helped, you were very available in helping NC4RJ coordinate so we could be at this conversation. But a lot of that looks like literally bringing people in from those, from those communities and letting them speak for themselves and discuss their own concerns. And a lot of, and all of that can be narrowed down to accessibility. Do they, do these people have transportation? First of all, is there a spot at the table for people to speak? Um, do they have transportation? Um, do they need assistance for childcare to make an arrangement to come to these meetings? I know, I'm, I'm a single parent, so, um, when we had that 11, 11-hour meeting in city chambers, I was very, very fortunate to be able to attend, but that's not something that's usually realistic for me, um, and someone in my financial position. So really just letting those people fill up spots at this table, um, taking them seriously, um, detaching from ego and the construct of legitimacy. Uh, people, people's concerns and experiences are always legitimate. Um, so I would just make, I would suggest that we be more proactive about letting people come into the space and actually voice their own concerns themselves.
Okay. I really, I really like that suggestion and, you know, that's why I also said that I want to, this is not going to be the only meeting we have on this, um, because I wanted to figure out a way to make that happen. And so, you know, I think it's difficult during COVID to try and, to try and, you know, set a room aside at city hall for childcare or things like that, but over Zoom, I know that that's more accessible to someone to be able to do it in their own home, provided they have internet access and a device that allows them to connect. And, I mean, there, I know that there are always going to be lots of variables, um, but I would love to be able to do that for the next meeting is try, I mean, the only thing that makes me nervous is I don't, I don't want to pick who gets to the, you know, I mean, I, I want to have a big enough table for everyone who wants to participate and I don't want to have to shut anyone out. Um, so we may just have to have multiple listening sessions to be able to talk about, to be able to have those conversations and be able to provide everyone the same opportunity before we advance the discussion any further.
Agreed. I wonder, um, what, and I, and I haven't, you know, taken my kids to the library so long because of quarantine and COVID-19 and all of that, but I wonder what kind of arrangement we can, I know that when I didn't have home internet, um, I would go to the library for Wi-Fi access. So I wonder what kind of arrangement, considering COVID-19 and, and quarantining and social distancing, what kind of arrangement can we make with the library since the library already has a strong relationship regarding resources with homeless people, our homeless population and our low-income residents?
Yes, I really like that idea. Um, and I'm also very sensitive to this issue of Wi-Fi availability. Um, you know, one of the things, one of the things we're doing at Cool Beans, we're getting internet installed there and we're going to put the Wi-Fi box at the very north end of the building and be able to set a picnic table up on the north end of the building. Um, we have a lot of somewhat transient people who come through that area and being able to provide them a space to be able to sit down and have OEC, super amazing, high-speed internet, um, you know, just give them the opportunity to have, have a space where they can go, use free internet, um, because we don't have enough of that in our community. It's typically only at libraries or city halls. So, um, I think that's a great idea. I'll get in touch with the library and see if we can have one of their, either large meeting rooms or multiple meeting rooms that we reserve and, you know, socially distanced and masks required and see if we can provide some opportunity there to have, to have a listening.
Absolutely.
Kate, I will, I will say that the, the way this Zoom works, they're going to have to be spread out. If you're in the same room, it's, you have major feedback. And so setting them all in one room probably isn't, um, doable.
Okay.
But you may be able to split them up in various rooms or something like that. I'm not sure that the library is fully open to the public yet. I think there are special hours right now, so we'd have to look into that.
Okay. And Councilmember Hall, I think your hand had come up first, so I'll let you go.
I would like to address the library issue because of course, the library is accessible to everyone in our community, but I was just trying to look up, um, the last I understood, um, they are still closed. I know they're not taking, um, any reservations right now for meeting rooms and such. And you still, you can do, um, actually curbside pickup for library materials, but the one thing they have open for, um, as soon as they felt comfortable having some people in the building is I believe you can make appointments now and it's really focused on, um, computer access and internet access for those in our community who don't have access. That is the one thing that they are, um, um, you know, trying to, um, provide services for, even at a time where they're not comfortable in having their entire building open, but I was just going to look and see if that's currently where we are. Um, yeah, they're reopened with limited services. Um, their library programs are canceled through August 31st. I know they're not taking any, um, they're not doing any room reservations or anything like that out of concern for, uh, being, um, spreading COVID because there are a lot of people that congregate at the library. But I do know, um, that, let's see. Um, I know that they're taking reservations to be able to come in and have computer access. So customers are able to reserve a time slot for public computer use in advance of physically coming to the library. So that is the one service that is, is open and everything else is pretty restricted at this time.
Okay, well then we might connect.
They can still attend here. They can still come to city hall and there's probably at least around 50 seats still available in the chambers. And then just like they do at, at our other meetings, if they wish to speak, you know, they would go into the next room and sit in front of the, uh, laptop and could see, you could hear them and they could see you. So that, you could still have quite a few here.
Okay. All right. I really, I like, I like all of these ideas and I think we should continue to vet a couple of them and see kind of how we can, how we can get as much public feedback on, on the track of this program as, as possible. Um, Madison, I'll let you go and then Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Holman. And then Sarah. Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
I'm sorry, I thought you said Madison. Um, I just want to throw out there for everybody's, um, just to make sure it's on the record and that we, we, uh, pay attention to this part. Uh, Word 5 has a significant indigenous- Ward 5 has a significant Indigenous community. So I know that there's a lot of distrust with the city government, even when, you know, I try to come out or try to, you know, I don't know, infiltrate the system. I get a lot of closed doors. So I would like to see an effort, I don't know what that looks like. I don't really have any good ideas, so I'm open to whatever and I'm happy to facilitate whatever I need to. So there's that, but the other thing is it's gotten better, but we have, doesn't matter how much money in some parts of Ward 5 you have, you can't get internet. It's getting better since OECs come out there. And I know that that's not cheap. I know that they're, they're fairly priced, but it's also not free. So I don't know, I know that, you know, if we had money for everything, we would just sprinkle it about. But I'd be interested in seeing some, I don't even want to follow this, grants for internet service. I think there are some on the federal state level. I don't really know what that looks like. But for those people that are much better at research than me, that I would like to see if we could help facilitate people getting internet in the rural areas. I know OEC has been huge. That's been a big game changer for us out there, out here. But that, that still can be prohibitive cost-wise and it's not, I mean, 180th Street, Little Axe Schools, that's, I don't know, 15 miles or something? Stephen probably knows. But, and so it's a long ways. You mean, if you don't have a car, you're in childcare and all of the things, you can't participate. And so I've tried very hard to take my meetings to the churches and places out there, but those are still not well-attended for whatever reason. But anyways, that's just my two cents on that because I just don't want to forget the Indigenous population in my ward specifically.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you brought that up, Sarita, because that's exactly what I was going to give suggestions for. I'm Indigenous, I'm Kiwa and not Absentee Shawnee, but the Absentee Shawnee people are going to be the tribe that we're dealing with because they're the ones over by Lake Thunderbird. I think that, like, providing a leadership position for the Absentee Shawnee directly through the tribal government, going to them is the only way, I think, to repair any sort of relationship that you have within the community to sort of trust the city council and also trusting any program that we come out with, given that oftentimes Ward 5 just being rural and being Indigenous feels ignored in a lot of these decision, decisions that we make. So I think we, NC4RJ has contacts with the staff over there, so we can, of course, help you there. But I think that is definitely how we sort of value our relationships with the tribal government. That's what we affect as well.
Absolutely. Madison, I appreciate that and we can.
Thank you, Madison.
I'd love to, I'd love to get with you and see if we can get that connection made, maybe through Councilmember Wilson and so see how we can, you know, have, maybe they want to designate someone. Maybe it'll be multiple people on any given day based on availability. But I would love to make sure that they're represented.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Holman and then Sarah. And then I want to be sensitive about the time because we do have another agenda item that I do want to get to and we have a number of public comments on this agenda item that I would want to read through pretty quickly. Ashley, would you mind muting?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Kate, we're going to have to get you a new microphone or something.
Is this, is this better if I hold it up?
Yeah, but surely we can come up with something so you don't have to hold it.
I know, I hate this. I'll, I'll just buy new headphones. These are pretty cheap, so. Councilmember Holman.
So Governor Johnson and my dad actually grew up next door to each other, knowing each other their whole lives. So I would love to be a part of any reach out to him or anything I can do. I'd be more than willing. One of the ideas I had where we could possibly have some in-person meetings because the facilities are large enough to do so that we own, and they actually are in the perfect spot because they're right in the middle of the underserved, lower income, more racially diverse areas of our city. And what I'm talking about are our rec centers. So Irving Rec Center is owned by the city, not the school. Woodya Rec Center is owned by the city, not the school. And then we have the 12th Street Rec Center as well. I know we don't have anything really far out east, but I was actually thinking of Little Axe High School Gymnasium. And so because the gymnasiums are large, it could be possible to social distance enough in there with seating or whatnot to maybe have a place, multiple places throughout the city where we could say, we're going to be at Woodya Rec Center this day or maybe we'll be there a couple days. Anybody that's interested in this part of town, this neighborhood, who wants to talk about racial justice and how we can, you know, change the mentality of the police department and things like that. I know we'll be at Irving Rec Center next week, we'll be at 12th Avenue and then we'll, maybe, I don't know if the Little Axe School System would be willing to let us use their gymnasium for anything, but that's the only place I could think of that's big enough out there.
We have a, we have a community center, Steve.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know it's just not as.
It's not huge.
Yeah. So I was trying to think like a big conference hall. So I don't know if the casino out there has like a big room or the Little Axe Health Center out there, if they have a big conference room. Or I think ideally that gymnasium at Little Axe High School might be the best deal out there. But those are some ideas I'd like to consider for how we can go to the people instead of trying to figure out how we can get internet access to them or come to City Hall or the library or something.
I agree. And I think it's really important that we go to where they are and not just invite them to, you know, our traditional institutional facilities. You know, I think a rec center doesn't feel as much like a government-owned building as City Hall. So I think that that's, I think that that's a really great idea.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate this conversation just about all of the ideas about how city government can be made more accessible to people. It's been really interesting to watch during this pandemic how our city government has responded and dealt with crises. I do want to really uplift and appreciate the efforts that the city staff have made to make these kinds of transitions. I'm a teacher and had to switch online midsemester, so I understand the level of labor that goes into transitioning your processes over to things like that. And then just also the way that they have made efforts to make our city government more transparent and accessible to the community, like the YouTube City Government 101. I think those are great initiatives and, and this could be an opportunity in getting public feedback on this. I think we try everything is, is my opinion. And if, if the goal ultimately is that this can be a, a way for the city to see how to better connect with their residents and how to bring people into participation and understand what their city, city government is. You know, I also recognize that over the past month, there have been a lot of very uncomfortable, very contentious, difficult conversations that have happened and a lot of people have participated in government that haven't before. And that's generated a lot of really defensive reactions. I can understand that. I can speak from my own experience as a teacher. I think one important thing to recognize that we have to really lift up as well is, is power dynamics. As a, as a teacher, you know, my students have student teaching evaluations that they can send to tell me what they think about me and honestly. But then there's also instances in which they can try to, you know, maybe voice how they feel about my teaching. But I have had to understand as a teacher that I have much greater power in that space and authority in that space to decide what is and is not allowed or what I will or will not permit. And so for a student to have the courage in a classroom space that I, you know, no matter how nice I am, at the end of the day, I'm still the one who gets to give them a grade and decide whether they pass or fail. And so for a student to have the courage to say, you know, I really didn't like the way that you did that or I really don't agree with your policy, especially when I was a new teacher, that really made me feel defensive. And I felt, you know, who are you to criticize me and I'm the teacher and I know what I'm doing? But in truth, listening to that feedback and, and making accommodating space for that feedback has made me change my classroom policies in ways that are more accessible and better for everyone involved. And specifically talking about accessibility, I'm thinking about things like, how do people with visual impairments or hearing impairments participate in our council meetings? Things like that. These are like big picture questions that through this process, if we're like intentional about seeing this as a case study and how we bring people who have not been included in our city government to the table, so to speak, like making, I mean, the table can get as big as it needs to get. We can have a table that's YouTube. We can have a table that's, you know, the postcards. We can try, we can do rec centers. We can do all of it. But I, but I do want to just really emphasize and underscore that I am so proud of the people who showed up and, and initiated these very difficult conversations. And I hope that in this conversation moving forward, that these criticisms can be viewed as an opportunity for growth, as an opportunity for improvement, as an opportunity for healing, because it takes a huge amount of courage to be able to speak up and criticize people who have a far greater amount of power and access to resources than you do. And I mean, from my own experience, I used to not allow cell phones in my classroom and my students hated that rule and I didn't listen to them for a long time and I was very mean about it. But at the end of the day, what I came to realize from listening to my students from not being defensive in that criticism and not taking it as an indictment on me as an individual teacher, was that my students were using their phones for things that I had not even thought of. I had some students that did not have glasses and so what they were actually doing with their phones was taking a picture of what I was putting up on the board and then using their phone to follow along in a class. And so I think in part of changing this mentality, if we can say, okay, these criticisms are coming from a legitimate place and we can listen to them and then come out on the other side of this with a much greater participation in our city government, a more true version and representation of what Norman is and, and what democracy looks like here. And I'm just very hopeful that if this is done right and intentionally with a goal of bringing as many people in as possible, that this can be something that benefits everyone in our community.
I agree, Sarah, and I'm really glad, I'm really glad that you framed it that way. That's, that's what I was alluding to in, in less than perfect words that you used when I say set ego aside, because I, I have had to do a lot of self-reflection on these topics and I've really noticed a difference in how I sit with my discomfort from the Debar Street renaming, which was probably the first really charged issue that I had to address that I didn't have any personal experience in. You know, I, I don't know what it's, what it's like to be a Black person living in Norman and having to drive by that street or to have these interactions with the police. But I, I feel very differently now than I did back then, sitting through those city council meetings versus sitting through these. And that's why I said put ego aside, because I think we all need to recognize the importance of listening to these people and understanding that they have a perspective that is valuable and that, you know, we can and should make accommodations to address those, to address those concerns. So just trying to keep an eye on the time. Does anyone else have any final comments before Brenda and I go back and forth on the public comment that we received? Stephen, Councilmember Holman, sorry.
No, I just want to say thanks to everybody, Sarah and Madison and Ashley for coming on with us and sharing your thoughts and comments with us. It's really important. It's going to help us make better decisions going forward. And I feel the same way my colleague, Councilmember Bierman, said. You know, I've been on the council for a long time now and, you know, I always felt like I've been a strong ally and proponent of things, but, you know, through self-reflection and the discussions we've been having, you know, looking at myself in the mirror and say, well, whatever I've been doing, it hasn't been enough. And I need to do more. And so I'm just really thankful for all of you. As you said, it is extremely difficult to get up at that podium at City Hall and address a council full of elected representatives and, as you said, a power dynamic. Nine elected representatives in the third largest city in the state. It's, is, would be very scary for most people. So I just am so appreciative of you and I'm looking forward to continuing this discussion and, and actually doing something as well. So thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
I won't say much more other than I just really appreciate the three of you being part of the conversation today and just really grateful for all the contributions that you've made up to this point and look forward to moving forward. So thank you for being here today.
Thanks, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Wilson.
Thanks, 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 thanks. I like you guys all so much. I love y'all, honestly. You taught me on the Debar night so much. Had no idea. I just sat there and cried all the way through that thing. But this was a much better conversation for me and I for sure, like my understanding, not your activity, my understanding of what was going on has changed so significantly. And if I take nothing else away from my council experience, it's that I learned this. So thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, Brenda, do you want to kick off with the first one? And we'll trade off until one of us fails to be able to form words.
Okay. We do have, I did get some more in via email that you were not copied on. So I'll read those as well when we, we get finished. Start with a comment from Mav K. "Thank you for taking the first step toward defunding Norman PD. Use the money reallocated from the police department to invest in the Norman community. The police should not be a one-size-fits-all response to the multitude of issues faced by the people of Norman. Invest in mental health crisis process team, response teams, I'm sorry. Affordable housing and eviction relief, public transportation, transformative justice for domestic and sexual violence and fully funded racial equity initiatives. Follow a model like Eugene Organ's Kahoots." Thank you.
And I'll read one from Megan. I'm probably going to butcher your last name. "Straughan, my sincerest apologies. I live in Ward 2. I'm a clinical social worker and I'm so happy to see the start of progress reallocating funds from policing to public safety methods that protect marginalized populations. I believe that the funds currently being reallocated are a very small start and advocate for further defunding of the police in favor of other public safety measures as the police intervene in many situations that they have neither the temperament, training nor community trust to engage in. It is neither fiscally nor ethically responsible to ask the police to respond to crises involving poverty and mental health. Norman can better protect its citizens and its budget by funding more appropriate interventions, including programs that prevent poverty and mental health crises in the first place. I would like to advocate for mental health crisis response teams with licensed mental health workers to engage in potential mental health emergencies. Eugene Organ has such a program that I believe could be studied and changed to fit our community. In addition, investing in affordable mixed-income housing, eviction relief, public transportation and racial equity initiatives will reduce crises related to poverty and structural discrimination. The city should also consider a transformative restorative justice initiative for survivors of domestic and sexual violence. I am deeply grateful for the work of this committee. While the original effort and reallocation was done quickly during crises, many have been doing this work and research for decades. These are long-term cultural and structural changes and I thank you for digging in to make a community safer for everyone."
Okay, the next comment's from Maggie Gibson. She says, "For today's Oversight Committee meeting, I'm asking you to please invest our community, our community reserve fund in mental health services so that the Norman PD are not required to intervene in mental health situations that do not require police, as most of these cases would be much better solved by fully equipped mental health professionals. Provide crisis response teams and invest in adequate social justice programs that allow for increased safety for groups most at risk when police are involved, such as people of color, people in domestic violence and sexual assault situations and individuals struggling with mental health issues. These people do not need police assistance because the police treat them with no respect and instead with violence. Please support our community by investing in programs that serve us rather than the police department. Let's change the social and cultural structures that say that police intervention is always right because it isn't. Thank you for your time."
And I will read one now from Tom Carroll, Ward 4. "I believe that the $865,000 defunded from the Norman Police Department should go to the creation of a mental health crisis emergency response team modeled on the one that Eugene Organ has successfully used for the past 30 years. Eugene Organ's program is called Kahoots. Please see the link. I feel that the $865,000 is not enough money to effect meaningful change if spread across many areas of need we have, i.e. mental health, affordable housing, after-school programs, etc. Systemic racism is woven into the fabric of all of our public institutions and our daily lives. We cannot fix everything at once. We can, however, strategically prioritize our needs and focus on fixing one thing at a time. Greeting a mental health crisis emergency response team not comprised of police officers but of mental health professionals and social workers will reduce the number of interactions of police with those experiencing mental health issues. The police are not trained or equipped to deal with mental health issues without the use of force. The mere presence of a uniformed officer is often enough to agitate the person in crisis, thus escalating the situation. A mental health crisis emergency response team can more effectively diffuse most situations and facilitate the help to individual needs." can more effectively diffuse most situations and facilitate the help of the individual needs. The $865,000 will be a good financial start to create and implement such a program, which will reduce stress on our police department and free our officers' time to engage in effective community policing and more effective training programs to more humanely police our community.
Okay, um, the next comment is from Alan Hatcher. Um, and he writes, uh, my name is Alan Hatcher and I live in Ward Eight. I am writing to express my support for the vision laid out by Norman Citizens for Racial Justice regarding how the funds reallocated to the community programs from the Norman Police Department budget should be used. This vision includes an investment in mental health crisis response teams, affordable housing and eviction relief, public transportation, transformative justice for domestic and sexual violence, and a fully funded racially equal- equality initiatives, or equity initiatives, I'm sorry. Uh, one example of successful mental health crisis response program is Kahoots, the program in Eugene, Oregon. It costs around 2.1 million per year and is estimated to save 15 million per year through ER diversion and jail diversion cost savings. But most importantly, it saves lives. A November 2016 study published in the American Journal of Preventive Medicine estimated that 20% to 50% of fatal encounters with law enforcement involved an individual with a mental illness. The Kahoots model demonstrates that these fatal encounters can be avoided. In 2019, out of a total of approximately 24,000 Kahoots calls, police backup was requested only 150 times. I have a great deal of respect for the way Mayor Clark and the Norman City Council members are prioritizing public health and safety related to the COVID-19 pandemic and I expect the same dedication to the public health crisis of systemic racism. This crisis can be addressed by defunding and de-miller- de-milliterizing, you know what I mean? Have a hard time with that word. The police department, demanding that Norman PD be accountable and transparent, including in their responsibility in the horrific death of Morconius Cassie. The Norman, or excuse me, the School Resource Officer Program needs to be ended immediately because of the violence and violent violations they have been inflicted on students in the hands of SRO, by the hands of SRO officers, as well as the program's overall contribution to the school-to-prison pipeline, which destroys so many young lives. Thank you.
I'll pause here for a second.
Kate, Kate, may I add something really quick? I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. Um, I know that not everyone tuning in will stay for the entire public's comments such, or us reading the comments. Can we clarify how much money we're actually working with within the community needs reserve budget? Cause I see 600 something thousand, 865,000. So could we clarify that for those tuning in?
Yes, uh, $865,000 was the total amount that was reduced from the requested increase in the police department budget. Of that, 235,000 has been set aside for an internal auditor position, which leaves, uh, my math, $630,000 in the reserve fund for community programming.
And the 235, if not for just one city auditor, that would be a lot.
For a team, yeah, or multiple.
We're not paying that $235,000 to a person to be our auditor, just to be clear.
Right. Thank you so much for clarifying that.
Councilmember Holman, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just, just, you made a point that really has stuck out to me that I've, I've really been trying to talk to people about and that is, uh, in crisis, when a police officer responds, um, just the mere sight of the uniform, a gun, a badge, the, uh, clanking of the keys on their belt, that right there can cause someone to lose control of the, whatever is going on with them at that moment. And then we know what can happen if the police respond with force because of that person losing control. We know that if these people, if they're approached by someone in plain clothes that does not present a threat, does not have a badge glaring in their face, uh, they're much more likely to be calm and it not escalate into a situation. So sometimes there's just nothing that a police officer in uniform could do, no matter how much training or skills or great of a person they are. The mere fact that they're wearing that uniform could cause someone, um, to really have a problem. And so I think that's one of the biggest things that's so important about having alternative options for response. Um, because there, in those situations, there's no amount of training that a patrol officer on the street would be able to have to deal with that.
Yep, I agree. That's a, that's a really great point. Uh, so the next public comment comes from Christina Aldos. I'm so sorry about these last names. It makes me feel really bad that I am probably messing them up. Uh, she lives in Ward Seven and she would like to firstly say thank you to all the people in Norman who are fighting to dismantle multiple systems of oppression, violence, and inequity. I fully support the recent decision to divest funding from the NPD and reinvest that money towards policies, programs, and practices that will work to decriminalize and rehumanize those in Norman who are suffering the most at the hands of multiple injustices caused by these systems. Please use the resources to invest in building programs that center the needs of those who have suffered and are currently suffering the most. Center those grossly inadequate and negligent, oh, oh. Center those who are suffering from the abuses of the SRO program in our schools, from the grossly inadequate and negligent sexual assault responses from NPD, from the eviction practices that have disproportionately harmed people of color and are causing more and more to experience housing insecurity and who have suffered from police brutality. Please center the healing of victims and perpetrators of domestic violence, as well as children and adults who need mental health services that have been denied access for a variety of systemic barriers that exist. Please make sure that the leadership and outreach to and with these communities is led collectively by those who understand deeply these lived experiences. I stand with Norman Citizens for Racial Justice and others in calling for the creation of more expansive and life-giving responses to public safety and well-being that don't reproduce the harm we are seeking to undo under another name. For example, we need to create mental health response teams and look to the Kahoots program being successfully implemented in the cities of Eugene and Springfield, Oregon. We can look to many cities across this nation who are currently taking similar steps in divesting from policing systems and investing into building more caring responses that seek to uplift the humanity and dignity of all in our communities. Additionally, we need to make sure that we create true ongoing transparency and accountability for NPD that doesn't just act as an extension of the NPD, but that acts as a truly independent entity that holds the NPD and the Fraternal Order of Police accountable for abuse, racism, and violence that are endemic, having kept dangerously silent and that continue to do harm to our community. It is important to keep present in our minds that these, this is indeed a fight and we have to be in it for the long haul. The fact that the NPD budget has long been and is still by far the largest budget expenditure for the city of Norman, even after accounting for the reallocation of funds, and folks are still pushing back so hard at this decision is truly revealing of the obscene abuses of power and privilege in Norman, in our nation, and in our world. To the people who are resisting defunding, who are suing the Norman City Council, who are circulating petitions to recall city officials, to the people who are glorifying so-called law and order at the expense of the lives of people of color and people living in poverty of, in our community, to those who are so willing to deny the truth about the inhumane and violent historical foundations of policing, to those who claim that they are uniting Norman while threatening and perpetrating violence, including sexual assault on Norman City Council members, local activists, and others who have taken urgently needed steps and are standing for justice, I say to you that your entitled misogynistic and racist unwillingness to share resources equitably is a losing pedal and we will fight that, we will fight that every step of the way. Here in Norman and globally, folks who are clinging so desperately to rotting structures and inhumane ideologies that are crumbling had better face, that better face that their time is up. It is time to build anew.
Okay, um, the next one is from Tiana Latasha, um, from Ward Four. I would like to first applaud the, the council for making the decision to be on the right side of history. We have a lot of work to do from here to see the changes we, we are striving for. A few key ideas for the reallocation of the funding. Utilize and better fund programs such as Norman's Financial Alliance, Work With What You've Got, Fiscally Fit Bootcamp, et cetera. These programs are already free and can help citizens problem-solve individual poverty in our community. These organizations should directly partner with Food and Shelter, the Women's Resource Center, Bridges, and other city assisted assistance programs so that they may, they can impact those that actually need these services. Poverty factors behind educating your impoverished citizen equals less money-related crime. Fund Norman's Hotlines and Crisis Intervention Services so they can have a greater community presence and reach. Um, the Child Abuse Hotline, the Reach Out Mental Health Hotline, the Safe Hotline, Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault. Center for Children and Families provides child abuse crisis intervention. Crossroads Youth and Family Services offers intensive training, education, and in-home support for abuse situations. Women's Resource Center also provides crisis intervention. There are multiple community-based organizations across the United States that support a police-free community model. I believe that the city of Norman, being a frontrunner in many things in Oklahoma, can take away many ideas from the, these organizations. The People's Community Medics is a community-led organization founded in 2011 by members of the Oscar Grant Committee. Members of the organization are trained in basic first aid, CPR, and how to treat seizures, stabbing slash gunshot wounds, domestic violence injuries, and more. The idea behind this is to build trust between community members and the, and leave police out of situations that only EMS services are needed. Often when injury results from a violent situation, police presence increases stress and chance for injury to the citizen or officer in question. SOS, or SAFE, Safe Outside the System, is an anti-violence collective that was founded by a people of color LGBTQ plus group in Brooklyn. Uh, their mission includes challenging violence, specific hate and police violence by using community-based strategies rather than relying on the police or state system. Their training includes citizen de-escalation of violence between individuals, including sexual assault, physical attack, harassment, and intimidation. I encourage council members and citizens to always stop and ask themselves, do I really need to call the police? I encourage citizens to go physically see the police when they feel they need to make a report or file a complaint so as to not bring them physically, physically into our neighborhoods, which could inadvertently be putting a neighbor in danger. I will be sending layouts of each group's action plan and provide responses to interview questions I have from the leaders of these organizations in a separate email. Remember Black Lives Matter and as always, power to the people. Um, and then, do you have any more?
Uh, there's one more from Cassie. Did you read that one as well?
Yes.
Could you read that one while I went to the bathroom?
Yes, and then there's a few more after that. So you have a little bit.
So, thank you.
Uh, my name is Cassie. I live in Ward Four. I would like to express my support for funding programs like Kahoots with the diverted funds. Non-police emergency responders are safer for our community. Kahoots in Eugene has never been responsible for a serious injury or death, even though they respond to 20% of the city's 911 calls. I think that if we could assure the safety of 20% of our 911 calls, Norman would see a substantial reduction in police violence. I believe a program like Kahoots could have saved Marco, Marco, oh, I'm sorry, I'm tired, Morconius Cassie's life. I particularly support the Kahoots model because the program dispatches medics and crisis workers instead of officers. And for that reason, I do not lend support to officer-based programs like the Memphis Crisis Intervention Team. I seriously doubt the effectiveness of law enforcement-based crisis programs and I believe they are counterproductive for our goal with this divestment. I hope that the council takes into account the community's call for non-police emergency options when planning for these funds. A program similar to Kahoots could really make our city a better place. Uh, Tiana Latasha followed up with another comment. I would like to mention that I had the opportunity to speak with two different Norman police officers in the last month and I'd like to share a point. When I asked one of the Norman SROs if he has ever needed his weapon, he told me he has never once had to draw his weapon in the line of duty. When I was employed at Starbucks, I was told by an officer that they only ever needed their weapon as a scare tactic, but it's never been discharged. Upon reviewing the open data portal, I see that, see that this quarter only one instance has been recorded where an officer has drawn and pointed their weapon on January the eighth, uh, on an unarmed white man who is listed as impaired. Each of these situations show how unnecessary armed officers can be. Believe in a future without armed officers invading disadvantaged communities. From Mary Francis, uh, I think many of us would prefer the crisis intervention team be separate from the armed police. It is important to explain the function and educate the public about the successful programs which Councilmember Kate Bierman outlined.
I'm Dalton Landtrip. The people in Norman have been calling for a divestment, divestment, excuse me, in the police and the creation of policies that actually attack the root of the issue. My fear is that y'all will create, for example, mental health crisis teams and have them work with the police instead of replacing the work police are doing with them. Frankly, the people in Norman, especially those in marginalized communities, have every reason to be fearful and distrustful of police. Use psych students from OU. Use people in the community who actually know and can help the people. We really do not want more police or for any new program that gives more money to the police. Dear City Council, defund the police. That's how we find, that's how we find these programs. The police have military vehicles and high-level arminants. Maybe the city could spend more money on helping the community instead of on an army to send into the community. Talking about where will funds come from is, I'm not, bad word, frankly, because this was important to y'all and others in the government. It'd be passed yesterday. That's how quickly the tax cuts and policies that help the rich get passed. Help the people for once.
And this is from the same person, Dalton Landtrip. I think that what Sarah said, uh, about the criminalization of social issues is really spot-on, but I do think that it starts with the policies, not the individual people. Some people are going to think homelessness is a personal problem, but, but that's because they've been taught that their whole life that it is. You cannot convince people that something is wrong unless you show them how they're, they are wrong. Invest in homeless people. Give them homes. There are more empty houses in America than homeless people. And watch how many improve themselves and watch how people's mindsets change once the government says homeless isn't a personal vice, it's a problem of lack of money. Um, this next message is, I'm confused. Is Cleveland County separate from Norman County? Because from what I understand, that is, from what I understand is that the system of care is already in place with Cleveland County. Do you plan to expand this? What new stuff do you plan to institute? But the CIT is not something new. It's old and needs to be redeveloped and updated, but I'm slightly offended because this program already exists. Another message, try contracting with a small internet company like Huge for these areas that are not getting serviced like they did with the electric company. Maybe start a voucher program for internet services that is contracted with this, contracted with the state or city like they do, similar to housing vouchers. I'm just saying, but it can work and easy to keep, maintain, and monitor. Um, this is coming in as an anonymous comment. When talking about accessibility to government, city government meetings, it is important to include disability accessibility issues in the conversation. I haven't heard much of this brought up. One issue is that deaf people cannot access these Zoom or City Hall meetings because there is not a sign language translator or text captions. I would recommend including someone on staff to fill these translation positions so like the deaf community could be included, especially with the Zoom meetings. It is hard to hear, almost impossible to read lips. This is just a single issue related to disability accessibility and there is a larger conversation to be had that should include disabled voices. Another suggestion related to having a designated space provided at Norman Library to participate in meetings via Zoom is that they would need a pair of headphones with a microphone to speak. Lee Hall brought up that they couldn't all be in the same room because of the audio feedback. But this could be solved by providing headphones, not to be shared, but could be donated for people to keep after using them. How much would it really cost to buy some headphones in bulk for these, for this purpose? This small expense would be worth it to include the voices of people without internet access in these conversations.
Really like that.
And this is the last one I have from Parker Manick. Please utilize the funds removed from the Norman PD budget to create community security based in trusted community members who can specifically address the problems of their peers. A model mentioned many times by other Norman citizens is that of Eugene Oregon's Kahoots. Additionally, please consider abolishing the SRO program in Norman. Move those expenses to further community-building programs and partner with MPS in more helpful ways to assist our city's young folks. Be the best they can be.
Thanks, Brenda. I know that was, I know that was a big one. Girl Holman, do you have a comment before we move on to the next agenda item?
You're muted, Steve.
Yeah, just a quick response to one of those topics. I know the county does have some services, but they do not have anything that is even remotely close to the Kahoots program in Eugene, Oregon. If they did, they would already be responding to those 20% of Norman PD calls to address those issues. So, no, we do not have that service in Norman, uh, or in Cleveland County overall that I'm aware of. And if we do, they are not involved in Norman police calls as far as we know in, in regard as far as we know in regard to a crisis intervention team similar to what we have, we've talked about tonight in Eugene. So, no, we do not have that in Norman, or they would already be addressing those calls mentioned, that 20%. So, just to be clear. Thank you.
That is true, and of course, there's nothing that says we can't utilize the expertise that this, you know, that the Chief Foster has, that the Mental Health Task Force has gained. But, you know, we don't, we don't have anything like what Eugene, Oregon has. So, I really appreciate all the public feedback, just to kind of wrap this up. You know, keep it, keep an eye out for some listening sessions and ways for us to get into the communities and center those voices in this discussion and as we formulate a program. You know, I think that we have done a good job as a city of reaching out to people in a variety of ways, but it is nowhere comprehensive enough and particularly recognizing that there is a large segment of our community, even as Councilmember Wilson said, that do not have internet access and can't engage in online efforts to reach out to the public. So, we really have to do a lot of this in very different ways and expend the extra time, energy, and resources to physically go to where these people are and not simply find ways to invite them to come to us. So, be on the lookout for that. We will continue this discussion next month in oversight as well. And I will work with city staff, with Pioneer Library System, and with the Parks and Rec Department to figure out how to best utilize those opportunities to bring people to spaces that are a little less institutional and formal. So, be on the lookout for that. We only have about 15 minutes left, so I don't know exactly how deep we're going to get into this next agenda item. But Agenda Item Number Two, if I could bring up my actual actual agenda so I can read the formal agenda items because my tablet screen went off. Okay, so back to the beginning of my agenda. The second agenda item we are going to be talking about today is discussion regarding bans on neck holds, no-knock warrants, and the use of civil asset forfeiture funds by the police department. So, Chief Foster, I know you're still here. Thanks for hanging with us. Can you talk a little bit, particularly, I think, I think everyone is pretty aware of neck holds at this point. We did have a discussion about it in the budget meeting and the study session beforehand. And can you talk a little bit about no-knock warrants and civil asset forfeiture? And then maybe we'll have time to go back into neck holds for a minute.
Yeah, I don't know when the last time is that we used a no-knock warrant, but I could see the only, the biggest time you may want one, if a judge would approve it, would be in a hostage situation where it was looking like it was going to end poorly. Other than that, I don't know that we would ever use one here. We don't use them like a lot of other departments do. Civil asset forfeiture, that is just, you know, on our side. When we make a stop and items are recovered and they're put for through seizure because of drug proceeds. Recently, that has been things such as we make a stop and the guy in the car just tells us outright, you know, he's got a, he's got a bag with $17,000 in it in the front, and in his backseat or trunk, he's got a bag with about $575,000 in it. And he says, yeah, it's just supposed to pick these up from a dealer up north and transport them down south. This is my money. That's their money. And then that will, that will go to court here. And then when it's done, we bring that forward to be forfeited, and we get a certain percentage of it.
I was going to say, so that typically goes to the state, and then we get a percentage. Is that the only, is that the only civil asset forfeiture funding that we receive? Or do we have access to these funds that are from the state or from other parts of the state that kind of go into one central?
No, no, that's the only ones we have. Everybody, the other parts of the state does their own. We participate in District 21 Task Force. That we might get part of those if they do seizures there. But that would be it.
I'm just trying to make sure that I understand and that everyone who might be watching now or later understands exactly how these funds come about. And so, I think everyone can, yeah, Sarah, give me just a second. I think everyone can kind of suss out why we're looking at a ban on neck holds and no-knock warrants. They may or may not have been following along over the last few years with Councilmember Holman's very vocal opposition to civil asset forfeiture funding, and that's one reason why it is on this agenda item. So, Sarah slipped in and got her, got her hand up first, so I'm going to let her speak and then Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, so our research team looked into this issue a little bit and just, you know, I think for the average person, or maybe the average person who hasn't experienced civil asset forfeiture, they might not even know what this is. And so, just to make that clear, the government can take a person's property without a criminal conviction or arrest. So, under state law in Oklahoma, officers can seize property, including cash, if they suspect it was used for crime. Law enforcement keeps seized assets unless you sue and win, which we know is an expensive thing to get access to a lawyer and to do a lawsuit is not something that's available to people who aren't wealthy, frankly. And so, you would have to prove that you, that your property had nothing to do with an illegal activity in order to get it back, which most people don't have the means to do. The same people who seize the money get to keep it. So, there actually is a perverse incentive for officers to seize property because then they would get to keep that property. The department would, law enforcement and district attorneys keep the money that they seize to pay for personnel, equipment, and other operating expenses. So, as Chief Foster mentioned, we are in District 21 that includes Cleveland County. So, in 2018, District 21 took more than $666,000 in civil asset forfeiture, which is almost double what was seized in 2017. Also, lax civil asset forfeiture laws like what we have here in Oklahoma result in more arrests of Black and Hispanic people during times of financial deficit. So, basically, when times are financially hard, it's in, there's a perverse incentive to make arrests in those, I guess what we would refer to them as high-crime communities, where we know that we can get some assets seized. And so, there are states that have abolished civil asset forfeiture, North Carolina, New Mexico, and Nebraska. And so, only criminal law in that case would be used to forfeit property. So, you couldn't do just civil asset forfeiture. So, obviously, this is on a state level, but we could ban the use of it at the city level. And I think that's what you're looking at for the ordinance, correct?
Yeah. Councilmember Holman.
Yeah. As many of you know, as mentioned, I do have some very direct and personal experience with this matter. And I didn't know a lot about it beforehand, but I definitely learned a whole lot about it during the 22-month-long process that I went through. Many of you know that I did go on, I was put on trial facing 13 criminal charges, 12 misdemeanors for possession of drug paraphernalia, and one felony for basically the money the police take, took out of the cash register they claimed was, the result was made from drug activity, and it was concealed. So, it was an automatic felony, concealment of drug funds. So, I went on trial in front of a jury. A jury found me not guilty of all charges. But, we had to go through an entire separate legal ordeal for six more months after the criminal trial in order to get our property back. After we were found not guilty, we had a court hearing, Cleveland County Courthouse in front of Judge Steis, and the Norman Police Department and the Cleveland County District Attorney's Office made the argument that this is no longer a criminal case. It does not matter that the defendants were found not guilty of criminal charges. That property is drug paraphernalia. We are not going to give it back unless a court orders us to do so. And because this is a civil case, we don't have to prove that it is drug paraphernalia. Mr. Cox and the Friendly Market people need to prove that it isn't. That was the case. The Detective Rick Newell of the Norman Police Department and the District Attorney under Greg Mashburn's administration, that was the argument they made. After three juries found us not guilty of all criminal charges, they made the argument that, well, the stuff is drug paraphernalia. The juries just found that they weren't in possession of it, but it is drug paraphernalia. And we were only able to fight this because the headlines generated by City Councilmember charged with drug felony made national news. And a nonprofit organization from Washington DC happened to read about it, and they paid all the legal fees. That was the only way we were able to get through it. It's the only way we were able to take them to court over the property. District Court Judge Steve Steis ruled in our favor, saying the state and police had presented no evidence that this property was drug paraphernalia, none. And he ordered them to return it. And you know what they did? They waited the 10-day period, and they appealed that ruling to the State Supreme Court. So, I had to wait another month. And any other regular person would have had to keep paying an attorney that entire time. And so, we go to the State Supreme Court and have a hearing there. And they say, we'll let you know in another month what our decision is. So, at this point, I was found not guilty four months ago of all criminal charges. So was my boss. And we're still trying to get our stuff back so we can reopen our business, our Norman, locally-owned, small business that generates sales tax and has local people working there. And so, on September 10th, 2017, after almost two years of going through this, the Supreme Court issues a unanimous decision upholding the lower court ruling ordering them to return all of our property. A month later, we get the signed order from the judge. We get our stuff back. And 11 days later, we restock the shelves at Friendly Market and we reopened it. That is what I had to go through just to get our property back after we were found not guilty of all criminal charges. Three criminal trials, zero convictions, zero. But I still had to go all the way to the State Supreme Court to get my property back. And so, that to me shows that there is a serious problem with this practice. I would definitely want to consider something as, well, I want to see what these other states do with the funds. Like Chief Foster just mentioned, if you pull somebody over and there's $500,000 and, you know, a bag full of illegal narcotics in there, I understand the situation that the police has put in there and where those funds and money could go. But I truly believe it should very, at the very minimum, require a criminal conviction before we could take property from people. And so, I mean, that's just my personal experience with it, and that's why I feel so strongly about it. Because if I had to go through that process to the highest court in the state of Oklahoma to get that civil asset forfeiture issue resolved, I can't even imagine, it would just be impossible for most anybody to do it. The cost of hiring an attorney to represent you would be most likely more, in most cases of forfeiture, it's less than 10 grand. And hiring an attorney to represent you in something like that could definitely, very easily cost you more than 10 grand. Most people aren't going to hire an attorney and spend more money than it was actually taken from them. So, that is why I feel so strongly about this. And, you know, I've heard opinions given before that, well, it's legal, and we need funds for things. And sometimes it is used for good things. There have been proposals to use those funds for very good things, a warming shelter, stuff like that. But I just think the source of it is unethical. And so, that's my opinion on that. And I'd definitely be open to further discussion about, if we can't abolish it, we need to require a conviction, a criminal conviction, before we can do anything. Otherwise, we give it back to somebody. I don't know. I just don't want Norman to be using those funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. I know, I know that you feel very strongly about this, and this has been something that you've really, you've really shined a light on for me over the last few years. And you have thoroughly convinced me, which is why I have voted consistently in recent, in recent times to not support the use of civil asset forfeiture funding for any expenditure that the city is making. Question for City Attorney Catherine Walker. If we wanted to continue looking at these bans prohibiting neck holds, prohibiting no-knock warrants, possibly with the single exception of hostage situations, and ban on the use of civil asset forfeiture funds for city expenditures, would that come in the form of an ordinance or a resolution, or both, or some other way entirely?
And those are internal policy, departmental policies that aren't typically included in ordinances or acted on by council. But I think what Chief Foster has, has indicated in previous meetings is a willingness to have the discussions and then go through the modification of their policies accordingly.
Okay, and so, what would you, and Chief Foster, feel free to weigh in here. What would you suggest as a next step in moving forward on this? Because unless I hear some disagreement from my other councilmembers, I've been trying to read faces and not seeing much disagreement there. How would we go about, how would we go about that process and making sure that it's, you know, that we follow that process all the way through?
I don't know if Chief wants to weigh in. I can't see him on my screen.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
I would say you have a way in when seizure funds are dealt with on the level of, we bring it to council to accept it. You don't have to accept it.
We accept it. We don't just authorize the expenditure of it? I didn't realize that.
You authorize it coming in. Isn't that right?
I thought we were, I thought we authorized the expenditure of it for the particular purposes that are outlined in the agenda items that we vote on.
That's how it works.
Is it the expenditure?
Yeah, it's the expenditure. Before you actually spend any of it, council approves it.
That's my concern, is I don't want it just, you know, piling up in a fund that council is then just refusing to spend. You know, how do we, how do we not accept it in the first place?
Chief Foster, we have an agreement with the DA's office. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's something that we can, we'll look at over your next meeting.
Okay, then, yeah, I think we'll, I think we can just, you know, ask for, ask for an update on all of this. And, you know, when it comes to neck holds and no-knock warrants, you know, maybe what that proposed policy change would look like. You know, obviously, this is not a body that votes on anything. But I would like to be able to kind of see what the, what the policy change looks like. And if we, you know, can shore it up with, you know, a council resolution that, you know, that, that, obviously, a resolution doesn't really disallow anything but stating council's opposition to the use of these tactics. However, we can best encourage that policy change to actually happen and to see it through to the final form. I would like to see us do that. So, if we could come with some, with some ideas. There is some language that is, you know, being, that is being circulated on ways to address this by ordinance. Prohibited neck holds, law enforcement officers shall not use chokeholds, strangleholds, lateral vascular neck restraints, carotid restraint, chest compressions, or any other tactics that restrict oxygen or blood flow to the head or neck. And then, of course, reliance on, minimal reliance on force language. So, you know, there's a lot of language out there, and I will, I will send that on to you, Catherine. Take a look at that. Okay, so I know we're kind of gearing up for the end of this. We've got Planning Commission pressing up on us at 6:30. I know that, I know that Ashley wanted to make a final statement. And if anyone else would like to, you know, make a final comment, we don't have a whole lot of time, but I'd like to at least let Ashley in here for a second because she hasn't said much in a little while. Ashley, you there?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Can you hear me? Yeah, so I wanted to, and then, of course, want to invite NC, my NC4RJ colleagues if they want to share something as well. But I wanted to offer kind of a closing statement on behalf of NC4RJ. Just really quickly, civil asset forfeiture is antiquated and at best medieval. I think what our concern and what our question was regarding the no-knock warrant was not about when the last time it was used by MPD, but we want to confirm that it is an actionable, actionable policy. And then we want to explore eliminating it. And I want to read a passage from Pleasure Activism, The Politics of Feeling Good, written and gathered by Adrian Marie Brown. Part of the reason so few of us have a healthy relationship with pleasure, and in terms of this passage, I'd like to invite everyone to think of pleasure as freedom from fear, security, accessibility. Part of the reason so few of us have a healthy relationship with pleasure is because a small minority of our species hoards the excess of resources, creating a false scarcity, and then trying to sell us joy, sell us back to ourselves. creating a false scarcity and then trying to sell us joy, sell us back to ourselves. Pleasure is not one of the spoils of capitalism. It is what our bodies, our human systems are structured for. It is aliveness and awakening, the gratitude and humility, the joy and celebration of being miraculous. So, I want to reemphasize, Norman Citizen for Racial Justice, we're not like some Instagram ghostwriters. We're professionals, professors, historians. I myself, I'm, I'm an equity and diversity consultant, so we're very professional and well-informed. We have our own research team. In the, in these processes, while we want to also work on undoing the ego that's attached to some of these harmful infrastructures, we don't necessarily have the time for those, for those issues of ego to be mitigated. So, in the meanwhile, it's going to be incredibly paramount that people like folks from NC4, NC4RJ and professionals are invited to this table to continue contributing to the conversation while those who are mostly in power and mostly privileged are learning to understand and mitigate their own white privilege. I just want to thank everyone again. I know a lot of our NC4RJ members, we are part, we come from marginalized communities. We have issues of accessibility. I know myself, I've received an eviction notice more than once during quarantine. A lot of us are dealing with these very issues that we're advocating for. So, I just really, really want to reemphasize my gratitude for my colleagues at NC4RJ and what they contribute here. And that we are, we are ready, we are almost, we are always ready to help with these issues, so please continue to reach out to us, Kate. Thank you.
Well, and thank you, thank you all for participating in this. You know, I know that this probably isn't going to be an entirely comfortable conversation moving forward, especially for those of us who typically sit on the other side of the dais. And so, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be an Overton window shift for us as we learn to set aside these systems of, of power to best ensure that we do center and rehumanize the communities that we are looking to serve and that it is incumbent on us to go to them. And so that they can tell us how we can create this program rather than us just telling them what program we're creating and telling them that it's going to help them. And so, you know, we, we kind of default to these, to these systems of power and these traditional institutions in our outreach. And it's really important that we work to break out of that habit and do things in a different way. So, please feel free to reach out to me anytime, ward1@normanok.gov. I will meet with any of you. I will be putting out a summary of this meeting tonight and sharing the video as well. And then working with city staff and Parks and Rec and the Pioneer Library System to find ways and methods to better bring ourselves to these communities so that they can tell us what they need. So, thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Brenda, I know we're a couple minutes late. I really tried hard to stick to the 6:15. But I feel like we made really good progress this month, and hopefully, we'll have a lot of action before we, before we continue with this next month and take a substantive step forward. So, thank you all so much. I really appreciate it.